A lot of familiar names here. It's nice to see and some new ones. Should I wait a few more minutes or should we get started right away? Any preferences?
I think we can wait a couple of minutes maybe.
We did have 130 people registered, so maybe we'll just wait another minute. We were just discussing tonight's a pretty good night to be on Zoom with the weather. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Britt Hancock and I'm one of the co-chairs for the Gulf District Health Coalition. I'm also a staff member with the Ontario Health Coalition. My fellow fellow co-chairs Barb Hogg and Owen Selkirk are also here tonight if you want to give a little wave. On behalf of the three of us, we're really excited to have everyone here this evening. We just recently revived the Gulf District Health Coalition just over a year ago. And are working really hard to reestablish the group in Guelph and the surrounding districts. I just wanted to go over some Zoom basics, just sure ensure that everyone's able to participate fully. I think a lot of us are familiar with Zoom after the pandemic, but just in case. The first function is just the chat function. If you have anything to say during the discussion, please feel free to put your comments in the chat. It's a little speech bubble on the bottom toolbar. If you don't see the toolbar, you just want to hover your mouse over top and it should pop up. And then the other function I wanted to mention is the reactions. If you want to raise your hand to say something, just please press the raise your hand function. And we'll be able to to get to you. All right. So we're super excited because we've had over 130 registrations for tonight's event. And this is one of the largest outreach things we've had so far in the area. I just wanted to, I think this also just reaffirms what we already know, and that's Ontarians do not want their public healthcare to be he's sold to for-profit clinics. And that our community members are ready to unite and take action. We can work together locally to fight back against the Ford government and their plans to privatize our hospitals and demand action to fix the public healthcare crisis. We must stop the Ford government to address the staffing crisis that he has had a heavy hand in creating. And that he needs to be held accountable for chronically underfunding our public healthcare to the point of collapse. Locally, we need to push for investments in our publicly funded healthcare and our local hospitals and not in for-profit clinics. And this will be only done if if we stop him. The Ford government's plans would dismantle our local public hospitals, taking profitable surgeries and diagnostics out of them and robbing them of their desperately needed staff and funding. And giving them to for-profit corporations who whose only concern is to please their shareholders. I would love to give the microphone over to firsthand account to Erin Arness. She's she's a a vice president, a regional vice president of the Ontario Nurses Association. And has over 19 years of clinical experience as a registered nurse. So if you don't mind, Erin.
Absolutely. Thank you, Britt. Welcome, everybody. Everybody safely in their homes on this awful night. It seems like it's March for some reason to me. I'll just switch here. My apologies that my screen just froze on me. First of all, thank you again, Britt, and thank you to the Gulf District Health Coalition for organizing this important event tonight. My name is Erin Eris. I'm a proud registered nurse of 20 years now. And the Ontario Nurses Association Region Four Vice President. That covers Kitchener, Hamilton, Gordon, Golden Horseshoe, Guelph, all the way up to Huntsville. I have 21,000 registered nurses and healthcare professionals under my leadership. But ONA does represent 68,000 nurses and healthcare professionals across his province, as well as 18,000 nursing students. I'm grateful to be here today and have the opportunity to share with you what is happening in our healthcare system now and why we know privatization is not the answer. At this point, anyone paying attention has heard of it. Our nurses and healthcare professionals have been stretched beyond the breaking point. We have been in crisis mode for almost three years now. And at some point, it's not crisis mode anymore. It is the new reality. And I think we all know this cannot be our new reality. We knew, we know now from the Canadian Health Institute for Health Information or KHI data that Ontario is the worst in the country when it comes to RNs per capita across Canada. Across Canada, there are 830 RNs per 100,000 people. But in Ontario, and this will not be a surprise to anyone here, I'm sure. We have only 668 RNs per 100,000 people, and that is a shame. That means just to get up to the Canadian average, Ontario needs to hire almost 25,000 RNs immediately. So what does the staffing shortage of this magnitude look like in practice? Or in hospitals or in clinics? It becomes common place for nurses to be kept at the end of their shift in hospitals. After 12 hours, they are supposed to go home to their families. But that's not happening all the time anymore. The next shift is so short-staffed at this point that it's not possible to safely transfer patient care. We have nurses working on maternity floors that would normally have 35, 35 registered nurses on shift. But the new norm is 17 or 18. We have hospitals where there are more vacant RN positions than there are RNs left on staff. In Guelph, we have, and I spoke to the bargaining unit president today at Gulf General, nearly 100 RN vacancies in that hospital alone. And they tell me that this is the highest ever. The Ministry of Labor has been called twice in January alone about unsafe conditions in in these hospitals in Guelph. Burnout is prevalent and very real. And nurses don't feel respected. We know that nurses are resilient and resourceful. We always put our patients first, even in these extremely difficult times. But our members, the RNs, tell us they're finding it increasingly difficult to provide care. And they know that patients deserve better. But the cost of this burden is taking its toll. Early retirements are going up. New grads are rethinking their careers and leaving after only one or two years on the job. And it's sometimes less than that, a few months and they're leaving. Nurses are leaving to work at private agencies where they can ensure they have work-life balance. There is a really very real cost to our healthcare system as the situation worsens. And now the Ford government is using this crisis to justify their privatization agenda. Ford took an understaffed system and made it much worse by introducing Bill 124, which caps our wages and the wages of many healthcare professionals and violates our charter rights. And Ford is refusing to work with healthcare professionals to invest and implement a meaningful retention and recruitment plan, leaving our system severely understaffed with no relief in sight. Across the country, Canadians pride themselves on our world-class, universal healthcare system. We believe that access to healthcare should be based on your needs, not your bank account. Nurses and healthcare workers are strong advocates for public, nonprofit healthcare. Because we know the devastating impacts of privatization. The most broken parts of our healthcare system are the ones that are already privatized. The long-term care sector and home care. Private healthcare will, as Britt spoke about earlier, take away from public care by pulling resources and staff from the public system. That public system that is already short 25,000 RNs. And as nurses, we have already seen this as our colleagues have left. Time and time again, I personally have seen this, to go to work for private agencies. And we can't blame nurses for making that choice. The agencies let nurses choose their own hours and pay more because conveniently enough, they are not subject to Bill 124. But there is a serious cost. Those agencies charge outrageous prices to public hospitals. They don't provide pensions, benefits, or sick days for these nurses. This undermines nursing as a stable career and undermines our health system by siphoning off precious dollars to line corporate pockets. I think you can see a theme here. This will impact access to quality care and it will hurt patients who cannot afford to pay. We cannot let this happen. Ontario's public healthcare system is not Doug Ford's to dismantle and sell off to his corporate buddies. Our public healthcare system has been built up over generations and belongs to all of us. That's why the Ontario Nurses Association is here with you tonight. And will continue to work hand in hand with our allies to fight for the investments we need in our public healthcare system so that everyone gets the care they need and the care they deserve. Together, I feel and we all feel that we can stop Doug Ford's plans in its tracks. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Erin, for providing us with that sobering account of what's happening in our local hospitals. Our next speaker this evening is Doug Allen. Doug Allen is a board member of the Ontario Health Coalition and a healthcare researcher for QP. He writes regularly on healthcare, the public sector class and collective bargaining for the Ontario Council of Hospital Unions, QP. And he also blogs on defend public healthcare. Hopefully I got that all correct. Thank you, Doug, for joining us this evening.
Oh, thank you, Britt, and thank you, Erin, for your insightful comments. And thanks very much to the Gulf and District Health Coalition for organizing this very important meeting, one day after the Ford government introduced Bill 60, which will privatize our hospital services, surgical and procedures. I'm I'm here talking to you tonight on behalf of the Ontario Health Coalition and bring greetings from the Executive Director Natalie Mara and the entire board of the Ontario Health Coalition. The Ontario Health Coalition represents hundreds of community and labor groups such as the Ontario Nurses Associations and others that represent people across the province. We have coalitions in town after town across the across the province, fighting for healthcare. And I'm here to talk to you tonight about not only the problems that Erin and Britt have alluded to, but also how we can fight it and how we have stopped it in the past to bring that campaign to make this decision by the Ford government impossible to implement, even if legislation is passed, as they seem bound and determined to do. The Canadian public Medicare system is one of the greatest accomplishments that we have achieved in our country for a democratic and equal system that allows us to live in a relative comfort compared to many other places, including our closest neighbors, the American system, which unfortunately did not develop the public healthcare system that we have we have developed to their great detriment. Since that the the decision of Canadians to move forward with public healthcare system, our systems have diverged. The overwhelmingly privatized US system leads to tens of millions of Americans that have no public insurance. It leads to an enormous extra cost. The money that is wasted on their health system in administrative costs is extraordinary. The money that is wasted in profits in the American privatized system is extraordinary. Whatever one might possibly conclude looking at that system, no one except for Doug Ford might come forward with a conclusion, let's make Ontario more like that failed system, that failed and unaffordable system that provides not only excludes tens of millions from its system of insurance entirely, but also provides inadequate insurance to tens of millions more. America is a rich country. It can afford to do better like ourselves. We must not sacrifice. We must not go down towards that role of a more Americanized, privatized system. But this is what we are confronted. We are confronted, I'm afraid, with the greatest challenge to public Canadian Medicare that I have ever seen. I am truly concerned and I I'm going to urge you tonight to make a special effort to join with us and build the biggest fight back that we have seen that will make it impossible for them to introduce the the privatization and unequal care that they seek. As Erin noted, we have a significant crisis of capacity in our hospital system. This planned crisis of underfunding for years and years has been unveiled through the the crisis of COVID. This past year, we have a completely unprecedented closure of 158 emergency rooms because of a lack of staff available in our hospital system. We have a turnover, according to the hospitals themselves, of 15% in the last year alone. That is completely the turnover of staff of 15% over the la in 2022 that was reported. That is completely unsustainable. The nurses, the healthcare workers, the the workers of all kinds in the hospital are saying this is too much. We cannot continue with this burnout with the violence that occurs in the hospitals, with the stresses of COVID, the extra demands of long COVID. We have to have a change. We have a government that purposely forced upon the overwhelmingly female workforce in the hospital system, wages which are which fall 5.8% behind inflation. A reduction in their real wages of 5.8% in 2022 and 2.5% in 2021. Again, leading to the exhaustion, burnout, frustration and cynicism of the the hospital workers. We have a system within the hospitals where hospital workers are subject to violence because of stressed-out patients and their families and others. Just a completely unacceptable level of violence that is that is occurring. Again, people are leaving and that's what we see in that 15% turnover. Because of this situation, because hospitals are unable to retain their staff, we now have 8% of all hospital positions that are vacant and 8%. That means that only that we're staffing those that those hospitals with only 92% of the jobs that actually exist there. Hence, the closure of of hospital services and emergency rooms. If you close the emergency room, those services, those hospitals are on starvation rations. There is no purpose for those hospitals if they have or much reduced purpose for those hospitals if they have have that. Across across Canada, as Erin alluded to, we are relatively significantly under capacity on Ontario hospitals. There are 17% more staff per capita in the hospitals across Canada compared to Ontario. We have far fewer hospital beds. And the reason for that, it's not because we lack abilities to buy beds. It's because we don't have the staff in our hospitals to provide that. We don't have the funding available for that. So we have a planned crisis. And opportunistically, the government has seized upon that crisis and offered a false solution, a solution of privatizing our surgeries and procedures, the less complex surgeries and procedures. They're starting with cataracts and with cataract surgeries and MRIs and CTs, but they're moving on next year to hips and knees. Hips and knees are the biggest category of surgeries that exist in Ontario hospitals. 38,000 hips and knees surgeries are done across across the Ontario hospitals. This, these less complex surgeries are the main basis of hospitals in smaller town and rural Ontario. Those hospitals will not exist if those surgeries are removed from their from their their menu. There is no purpose for those hospitals if they don't have those surgeries. The more complex surgeries are already provided in other locations and the people in those communities are forced to travel in order to get to the get those surgeries. This goes directly against the vital interests of the base of the Ford government in rural Ontario. And yet the government proceeds. The Ontario Health Coalition campaigned during the the 2022 election, saying that the Ford government was going to increase the privatization of hospitals and privatize the surgeries and and procedures. The government flat out denied that this was happening, a complete falsehood on their part. Denied it entirely that this was this was this was a thing. Almost immediately after the election, Ford began to message that this is actually what he was going to do. We found out subsequently through the Financial Accountability Office that actually, while they were telling us that they weren't going to privatize the services, that they had actually increased the funding for the independent health facilities that are the main vehicle currently for the delivery of privatization services. You can't believe a word they're saying about this this process. We were extraordinarily annoyed when we found out that they had lied to us and lied to the public during the election campaign about their intentions. And why did they lie? Because they knew that they could not get elected if they were going to campaign on a on a promise of privatizing our health services. No one in this province is calling for the Americanization and privatization of our healthcare system. They knew they had to cover it up in the lead up to the to the election. That's why they did it. If they're going to do it, they should they should resign and call another election and openly and honestly tell people this is what they're campaigning on. They did. They have not done that to date yet. Why are we concerned about privatization? Well, we have the obvious example of the privatized system, the corporate-run system in America. And make no mistake, this isn't about just about a few doctors setting up a clinic. We are dealing with a major push by giant corporations like Galen Weston and the Loblaw's Corporation pushing into our our healthcare system and creating a two-tiered healthcare system. We are up against some very serious and ruthless forces that are determined to make a profit off of the healthcare dollars that that are available to them. We have a number of concerns about this reform. First of all, we know we have done extensive research on this, calling clinics right across Ontario and asking them about their services they provide. And in very a wide number of cases, we found that they would not just upsell the service, which has been discussed in the media, but actually extra bill for medically necessary services. This is the challenge. This the the challenge is the for-profit corporations. And I might add, if I haven't noted already, that almost all of the independent health facilities are for profit. They're not some loosey-goosey, nice-sounding, not-for-profit clinic. They are overwhelmingly for-profit. And these these organizations over in many, many cases violate the Canada Health Act, and we have a government, unfortunately, that only works on a complaint basis. Only if you go and basically rat out your doctor, the doctor that's providing you vital healthcare, will they investigate the Kate investigate the 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 violations of the Canada Health Act. That's completely unacceptable. We need a government that 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 looks for and investigates and finds these violations of the Canada Health Act, not just wait around for somebody who despite receiving perhaps life-saving care from the doctor, claims that that the doctor is is also violating the Canada Health Act. Those charges that these that these profit-seeking organization charge can in many cases be very significant. And a bar to families and especially to our elders and their ability to get the care that they need. We also again have very serious concerns about the staffing and what this will mean. We are at an unprecedented staffing shortage in Ontario hospitals, a completely unprecedented shortage. And yet, at this time, the government has set up a system that won't be subject to the wage suppression that we that I mentioned earlier, that will be excluded from those those that that level of of attack. But will try will be seeking the same sorts of workers that are employed in our hospitals. We have a staffing crisis, not just in hospitals, but in long-term care and in home care. And yet they want to set up a new for-profit organization to compete and take away those staff from the hospitals and do it, I might add, not on a 24/7 basis like hospitals and long-term care facilities have to operate, but on a Monday to Friday, nine to five basis. A lot of people would find that very attractive. This will also lead our hospitals with only the most extreme and hard hardened cases. So we know, for example, the private hospital, somewhat similar but somewhat different organization, the for-profit Sholdice Hospital, will, for example, only operate on you if you are and and deal with your hernia if you are not overweight. But if you're overweight, too bad, so sad. We don't want to deal with your business. Go back to the hospital and wait for the 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 care if they get around to you. That is not the sort of care that we need. We need a comprehensive, integrated system. This system will fragment the care. It inherently fragments the care. No matter how much they try to cover that over. Privatization sets up a different set set of motives and a different system that has a whole different approach to what they what they wish to do. So we have to stop this. We really do have to stop this. And we're after extensive consultation with groups across the province, we we are going to build for a province-wide referendum. They lied to us in the election. They got elected on false promises. We're going to show what the actual opinion of the public is about this sort of thing. We've this is a tested process. And in fact, we've even tested it on this very issue in 2012, when the previous government tried to introduce quietly and without fanfare a similar sort of privatization of our surgeries and procedures in the hospital. We ran votes across the province and collected 200,000 people voting to say no to this process. Well, now we have, there is no denying it. They've even introduced legislation to do it. And they're privatizing our hospital services. There's a major debate in our society. We think we can do much better and increase that voting and make it absolutely impossible for the public to for the 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 Ford government to proceed with with their privatization. We've also done this in community after community to stop the public-private partnership hospitals that the government have. that the government have uh have set up. We didn't stop those, but we did stop the widespread privatization of th- of thousands, probably tens of thousands of hospital jobs. So this is a proven technique that can mobilize the public. Uh allow us to talk to tens of thousands of people across the province to tell them about this issue, and so that they know that there is a concern and that there's a fight back that is gonna stop this this concern. The plan now is uh to have community votes across the province uh in uh in all sorts of locations, every possible location, in stores, in businesses, in workplaces, uh in churches, and where wherever we can set up a community uh voting location. Well, we'll ask the public to vote on the question of do uh whether they wish to have these uh for-profit cert- uh privatization of our of our uh of our healthcare system. We're confident that if given a choice, Ontarians will vote, no, we don't want this system. We want to keep and build and develop our public hospital system. Uh but that's what we'll find out. We're gonna give the public a choice. We're gonna have community votes in every location we can, and we're also gonna organize in the two weeks leading up to the uh to Friday, May the twenty-sixth and and Saturday, May twenty-seventh. We're gonna organize uh workplace votes where people have an opportunity. Uh wherever we can, we can work it in lunchrooms and 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 exits from workplaces uh where employers allow it, where we collect uh collect the the votes right in the workplace uh uh for to ha- to have uh allow uh working people to vote on this issue. We have set ourselves a goal of one million voters. We believe if that happens, even a government so adverse to hearing from the public as the Ford government will be forced to uh reconsider their options and move away from this this uh system of privatization. So without uh without further ado, I'd again like to thank the Guelph Coalition. I'd like to thank you for coming out and spending your evening. I know it's a hard one to spend an evening after after a long day to hear uh speakers talk about these issues, but this is a vitally important issue. And I want, I want to ask each and every one of you to consider what it is you can do to help us build a really big turnout and a really big vote in Guelph. I was actually uh uh no, sorry, that was Kitchener. I'm getting confused. I was at a, one of the Kitchener P-three votes uh in your, in the local communities, had a lot of fun at a grocery store uh collecting votes, but we can do that here, and I want you all to think about what it is you can do to help us build a big very wide vote in in Guelph and District. And with that, I think I'll turn it back to Britt with my thanks for for your indulgence.
Thank you so much, Doug. Um I I think you gave a really great comprehensive overview of what we have planned. It does seem like a really large task, asking for a million votes. But I just want to remind everyone that the Ontario Health Coalition alone has over uh three-quarters of a million members. Um and then tons of union affiliates that have large uh memberships as well. Um so this is something that can actually be done. We do have fifteen, just over fifteen million people in Ontario, so if we get a million votes, I'm sure this will shake the Ford government. Of course, he, this government is a different beast than other governments that we've dealt with in the past, but um we need to try and have pushback. Uh large petitions that people are passing around on the internet are usually around twenty thousand signatures. So surely, if we get a million votes and present them to the legislature, I'm I'm hoping we'll have uh a great response. Um trying to think of anything else. I've been on a few of these meetings now, so I'm just not quite sure what has already been mentioned, but if they always see has done this in the past and it's been successful on a smaller scale, I'm sure we can all pull together, and we have strong coalitions across the province with membership. I wanted to show a video just to give everyone an idea of what happened. That is, Riley, do you mind muting? Um a a video of the P-three public sites or referendum, so to speak, in uh I'll show the video to everyone now, if you don't mind. Let me just uh share my screen with everyone. Sorry, I'm just having difficulty moving. Function, there we go.
Uh Britt, I think you could optimize for yourself with the sharing.
This looks very much like an election campaign, except it's not. It's a plebiscite vote. It's actually citizen-run, not government-run. It's put together by the Ontario Health Coalition, asking citizens if they want a public or a private hospital.
Well, the drivers have extra ballots, so if we want to like if they aren't in their drugs, then I'll let them know you by a compromise.
If all the spend on stuff, people are interested, uh they want to learn more. Um they've been very supportive of the campaign. We've had very little people come in upset about what we're doing.
Well, we're holding a community-wide plebiscite, which is a community-wide vote, like a referendum. Only it's organized by Citizens Group, by the Kingston Health Coalition um about the future of the new hospital in Kingston, whether it's gonna be a public, not-for-profit hospital or whether it'll be built as a P-three privatized, P-three hospital thirty-year-long contracts with a private for-profit multinational consortium.
Uh some people wonder how this affects healthcare. They say, well, the healthcare system remains public because nurses and doctors are paid by the government. But the model of a P-three hospital is a is a step in quite a dangerous direction.
Some of them are conservative members of uh council that tried to argue that uh we shouldn't have any role in it as municipal councillors because it's a provincial issue.
So we're really concerned in the city of Kingston about uh about uh where are where is the money from our property taxpayers go? And uh it turns out that it's going to um to fund a consortium that over time will make that twelve percent uh on their invested money. So uh that twelve percent is part of that twelve percent is coming from our property tax.
It's really positive. That's actually really cool. People are pretty excited, especially when they hear that there's a hundred and eighty other volunteers that are on the ground uh doing this as well. Uh it's just such an incredible feeling of solidarity. Everybody, you know, they've been out there and told for an eight-hour day, they're they have no problem doing it. They're having fun and having a great time. It's been very hectic, super hectic. Um we have three volunteers here for most of the day, and we barely had a chance to have a drink of coffee right here in Timpani. So that's just supposed to tell you all basically good.
All the businesses have just been so warming and welcome to allow us to be able to sit up these chairs. It's been a great, great um great commitment by the businesses here in Kingston.
It was a huge victory. And you know, you talk to people on the street, everybody knows what's happening. It's now become a public issue, and it wasn't two months ago, nobody even knew we were getting a new hospital. So we've elevated the debate and the public sort of discussion and the democracy around this uh policy to a level which is phenomenal. That's the value in a sense of validating that there was all that work that was done. And then as the next step forward, we're gonna be able to say to the government and the politicians, you know, this community really cares. We want a public health person.
Yeah, well, I hope that gives everyone a better understanding of what we're we're hoping to do. Um I'd love to open up the meeting to questions. Sorry. Are there any questions in the chat, uh Barb or Owen?
Uh nope. Just people commenting, saying looking forward, and it's a good idea and stuff like that.
Yeah, there's a lot of community leaders in this this group here, so I would love to hear if anybody has any insights.
Um Oh, Mandy His- Hiscox, is that how you say your name, uh has a question. What would, what is your question, Mandy?
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt. I just I I heard everything that was just said about the new system and the privatization, but can somebody give me like a pithy really clear response to people who say things like, I wouldn't be jumping the queue, I would be leaving the queue. So like, you know, the the idea that when you take the four oh seven, you're making it easier also for the people on the four oh one, because I I feel like I hear that, and I I imagine that that is what a lot of people are gonna say, and and without knowing all of the details, like what's like a like a quick and easily understandable response to that.
Uh if I can jump in, uh there there is only one group of healthcare workers. You can't uh you can't just uh create a new uh new bunch of healthcare workers uh like you can a a new highway. Um and those healthcare workers are gonna be are gonna be uh spread out that a little bit thinner, and I think actually is this is actually the predicament that the Ford government has got itself in, is that it's it's not that easy to make uh uh a brand-new RN. You can't just snap your fingers. They take uh four years at university, and RPN takes uh uh two years at at a a community college. It takes a while to develop that that uh that healthcare workforce. And now they're they're in the sort of ridiculous system where they're trying to uh beg your thy neighbor by taking uh taking staff from other other provinces, and that's a big, big part of what the uh the current uh uh human health, human resource policies of the government is. Uh you can't just snap your fingers and create a a new healthcare workforce. Uh it has to be developed over a period of time, and you can't, a- and in fact, here's the other, the extra big problem is that if you take those uh those healthcare workers, what these clinics do is that they upsell medically unnecessary services. But, you know, right now, we're in a huge challenge to actually just staff the medically necessary services. We have two hundred and fifty thousand uh surgical procedures backlog. Uh that has expanded rapidly over the last few years with COVID. Uh we have to focus on the medically necessary services. We don't want a system which is predicated on a system of upselling medically unnecessary services. We have to have the staff focused, the healthcare staff that is available, focused on the medically necessary sta- services. So I hope that, Mandy, that uh clarifies things, at least from my point of view.
Yeah, that's super helpful. Thank you.
I just want to say, we also have a fact sheet on our, on uh the Ontario Health Coalition page. It breaks down a lot of these these myths um and why they're not accurate. Um I can try and put that in the chat as well. Or maybe Riley, if you don't mind. Um any other questions? Owen or Barb?
Yeah, James Gordon has a um question about challenging this in the in the legal system. Like you, we're challenging Bill Seven with the seniors advocate group. Um is there any talk about a legal challenge for this? Now, I guess it's newly Bill Sixty.
Our our focus right now is on the political uh side. Um the, what is very frustrating here, Barb, is that the uh is that there are actual things which uh are going on in a quite a widespread fashion, which are in a front, which go against the Canada Health Act. The Canada Health Act requires that medically necessary services are paid for through the single payer system, the single public payer system, and yet that is not happening. We have a problem that we have a uh both both federally and provincially, that we don't have proactive enforcement of that policy. We, the the government, the provincial government claims, they at least claim that they will respond to complaints, but there is no widespread uh enforcement of that provision. Uh so we have the laws in a way, but we don't have the enforcement of the laws, and we we saw no further sign of that attempt to enforce the laws uh through Bill Sixty that was introduced yesterday. Um the the Canada Health Act itself uh it requires a single payer system, a single, a public insurer, insurer system, uh and that is regularly violated by these uh by these uh for-profit clinics, but it is not uh yet in enforced and uh but it it does, uh that is a a significant problem.
Lance?
I I I'm a co-chair of the Durham Health Coalition. I just, I go to a few others just to see what's happening in their areas to support, and we all support each other. One thing about this thing about them outsourcing uh healthcare to private clinics, I think it's a human rights issue to towards seniors, because that's who's gonna affect more, because they're the ones to get the cataract surgeries, hip replacement, knee replacements. And they're the ones that, as we know, they're already doing that cataract surgery. They're saying, well, if you want this thing, I have a friend. He had to get uh cataract surgery, and for a lens, the doctor wouldn't give him. Said, if you're gonna get the old hip one, I'm not even gonna do you. So, so now he it wasn't that he cared about that, because you already had one done. He wanted the same one, but he just asked that question. That's the answer he got. So if, are they doing this to others? And it's not all seniors have money. So I I don't know. I think it's humans' right issue against seniors. This is what they're doing.
A hundred percent, Lance. I was wondering why, how how we were lucky enough to have you here, uh Lance, because I I thought maybe you'd moved uh from Durham to uh to to Guelph, but anyway, glad to have you. Uh that is, it is a widespread uh a widespread problem uh that you're uh talking about, the 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 uh uh the the upselling uh that that goes on. It it's very hard. There's a very significant imbalance in power. Uh uh if they tell you you need something. I know my mother uh was eighty-nine uh when she had her hip uh replaced. And the 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 doctor just told told me, you know, pay pay seventy bucks for, I don't know what, but it was for whatever. And uh you know, I I I I believe in public healthcare, but I I didn't feel like putting my mother's, uh I didn't feel like having any potential for delay uh by saying no to the doctor, and I suspect many others feel the same way. So I paid the seventy bucks and I shut up. But I, you know, I can't say I'm proud of it, but I, that's just the reality of the power of the of uh the power imbalance that we have here.
I noticed that uh David mentioned in the chat that we should get unions involved in order to hold workplace votes. So that's all underway. All major unions across Ontario are gonna be helping the Ontario Health Coalition. Uh many of them sit on our board as well, as long as other community organizations and and um religious groups uh of variety of different um individuals. And so they'll be joining on as well to have these workplace votes. We're also having a website that allows people to vote virtually, um making things a little bit more accessible for some people. Um we're hoping to put the votes in the newspaper as well, and so people can cut those out and send them in. Um collecting votes anywhere we can, um as Doug mentioned, anywhere with high foot traffic. So whether that's at a Legion or uh a garden center on a long weekend or baseball tournaments. Um we have groups of people joining together. And so tonight, we really wanted to gather everyone and see who would be willing to volunteer with us to help us make this happen in Guelph. Um we're really fortunate to have a a lot of passionate individuals. Um and so if anyone wants to put their name in the chat, if they want to get involved somehow. Uh the Gulf District Health Coalition, we're also creating a steering committee, so to speak, of different organizers, um planning different options and events. Uh it, it's been pretty successful so far. Some of the ideas we've been able to drum up, and I'd love to hear from other people in the in the community.
We'll be with you, Brett. You know Ona's.
Thank you.
Oni is in.
It's awesome.
Thank you, Karen. Um, are there any other questions?
I, I just wonder if, yeah, I, I think that suggestion, uh, uh, Britt, that, uh, you know, people just put their names forward. Uh, and, uh, just make sure that, that, uh, we have your contacts. Uh, so we can, we can, we can, we can, uh, contact you, uh, uh, as this campaign unfolds. That's really important. We're gonna need a whole raft of workers in Guelph. To get, uh, to get that vote out and get it counted. Um, and, uh, to the extent that you guys can offer some time on those days, or in the, or in the workplace votes in the, the lead up ahead. That is just really, really, really important. It's, it's gonna take a whole group of us, a whole large group of us to make this. Uh, happen on the extent that we have. Uh, that we can and that, uh, that we, you know, we're, we're gonna do campaigns to build it up in the media in the month before the vote. So that, uh, everybody hears about it in the local media. We need to work with local businesses. Uh, for, uh, to find their support. We need to work with a whole range of, of, of opinion, uh, on this. I'm, I'm glad to see it. I'm really seeing a lot of people just saying that they could, they're gonna volunteer. It's super appreciated and super necessary to make that. Special effort for this campaign.
Absolutely. Barb? Do you have a question? Something you want to say?
Sorry, yeah, um, I just saw a question about how, how are the doctors feeling about this? So. We of course don't know how all the doctors are feeling, but there is a Canadian Doctors for Medicare. There's a lot of doctors, um. That want to keep, um. Um, healthcare public. And then there are some doctors that do wanna have it private, because they will have the clinics and the businesses. So. Um, I wouldn't know how many of them are of each category, but there's both sides to it. And, um, also Karen Rathwell and I, uh, Karen's from the, um, Guelph Wellington Coalition for Social Justice. And Karen and I are gonna be going down to talk with Lloyd Longfield in March. Um, about some of our concerns. And this would address what Mickey was talking about with the federal government. Not asking, uh, for accountability from the provincial governments. So we're gonna go and as, um. As, uh. One of his, some of his constituents to talk to him about how we do want strings tied to the money that they're giving the provincial governments. And that, um. We want. Uh, like most people that we think, um, want to keep the. Um, healthcare public, and we don't want any of our taxes going to for-profit clinics. So we are trying to reach out to. Our, our federal representative for our area. So I just thought, um, there are. People trying to fight with this, and we do have help. We are on the social justice committee. And there are a lot of other groups on that committee, and all the information is going out to them, and, uh, unions are involved there as well.
Thank you for clarifying that. And Christine?
Hi, um, I, uh. So I've been looking at, watching the news and like listening to a lot of. Different groups who are like, well, wait a second, we don't want this. So QP went through their, um, strike last year. Um, the nurses, I think, are going through, are, there's supposed to be an action tomorrow.
That's correct.
Real, yeah. And, um, you know, and then there's the, the, um. The highways going through environmentally sensitive areas, the green belt being taken, you know, all these things. So. I feel like this is a little bit like playing whack-a-mole, where each group is like, well, wait a minute, well, wait a minute. So when someone was saying something about. Can we connect with other unions? Is there a way to not just connect with unions on this account, but also on? Like, all of the accounts, since it seems like the unions specifically are getting. Um, uh, affected. And then there are environmental issues, and then there are, um, other infrastructure issues. So. I feel like, like there's like, almost like this, um. Like, a lot of people are really angry, and is there a way to sort of funnel everyone to? Either a mass movement or a way to like, instead of having to say, hey, we're now dealing with this issue, can you help? Just have, we have all these issues. Let's do this one, then this one, then this one, and this one. I'll help you with this, you help me with that. I mean, I, I don't know anything about. Politics or how unions work, so I'm not sure if this is. Even possible, but it just feels like there's all these issues in the last year, uh, and. And it just feels like there's a lot of resources going into, let's do this one, and then we'll do this one, and we'll do this one. Is there any way? To pool that resource a bit? So that we're not exhausted at the end of every single fight? I don't know.
Uh, we.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Doug.
No, you go ahead, please.
I think we can join under this umbrella. The Ontario Health Coalition is good. We have the Ontario Federation of Labor. That's our house where the, the unions lie. But we all work together, as Doug and Britt said, we, we affiliate with the OHC. I can tell you. Christine, I have. Health is so broad. So being a, a, a vice president of a nurse's union. I have spoken at green bat belt rallies in front of thousands of people, because. It is, it, it's a social determinant of health. This is important to us. So we're doing things that we've never done before. You wouldn't have seen, uh, labor unions speaking at environmental rallies before, but it's so exciting. And it's great to, to be part of this movement. Yes, people are angry, but we have to get under the, the same tent. And there might be three different tents, but it's better, I, I agree, than having a thousand different tents. Don't you, Doug? I think if. We need to organize is, is the fundamental behind this. And I think this movement is a good place to start.
And, and there are, what, what, what we'll be doing here will help us build the community labor. Fight back and develop our capacity to fight back. We do know that there is important work that's being done. Uh, as people have mentioned here, uh, welcome back Doug. On the weekend and the enough is enough, uh, action campaigns in the future. We are from, for our point of view. We're, we're gonna, we're doing this round of, of town halls. We're gonna do another round. To really build it up in, in April and, but we're gonna have a very focused campaign, where we make a very focused ask. Uh, uh, to, uh, the, the broadsworth of community activists to give us some time at the end of May. Uh, you know, it, it, you know, in whatever form it is that you can, that you're able to contribute to make that time on the. Twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh, in the case of the unions, uh, over the course of two weeks. Uh, not every day of over two weeks, but, 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 uh, you know, collecting as is appropriate in your workplace. Uh, but a very, very focused ask, uh, Christine, cuz we definitely hear you. There is a lot coming at us and an awful lot of very worthy causes. And the beauty of this campaign is where it's a focused ask. We're gonna, we're gonna support you with, with, uh, various ways to make it an issue in your community. And then once that's over, you get a little break before the next series of campaigns happens.
I think this is also in community building. Um, we're also holding a, a bus ride to Toronto on Saturday. Um, which was supported by OPRC. And the Green Belt, Green. Gulf Green Belt Group. Barb, you might need to correct me on that. Um, we're also gonna be at the OPRC Symposium as guest speakers. And on Breezy Breakfast later this month. I think it's all. The leaders in, in our community need, uh, need to gather together. And we need to get as many boots on the ground. As possible.
Um, just to let everyone know about the bus that we have going to Toronto on. Saturday morning, it's leaving the Stone Road Mall, um, at eight. Going to Queen's Park, and we should be back by four. Uh, there's twelve seats left on the bus, so if anybody wants to contact me, I'll put my email. In the, um, chat. And if you wanna reserve a seat, um, it's twenty dollars or pay what you can. Um, but you do need to reserve, um, we're getting a few more people every day, so. Uh, it's first come, first served. And, uh, it's for the, um, the, the, um, Welcome Back Doug Rally, which is, um. Uh, protest party that supports Indigenous. Healthcare, education, environment, and democracy. So anyone that has any concerns. Uh, we're all going to Toronto, um, to Queen's Park, so, um, just contact me after I put. Whenever you want, but when I, I'll give you the, um, information in the chat.
I've seen a lot of people volunteering, um, no task is too small. Where, a- as you saw in the video, there is a bunch of little cardboard boxes. So if you're able to go to the LCBO and collect boxes. Um, or. Bring in materials or provide a table, or. Ask a, a local grocer or pharmacist, probably not Law Claws United, but, uh. A, a local pharmacist, if we can host a table outside, that would be excellent. Um, again. There's nothing too small to contribute, whether it's just sharing our leaflet with your neighbors, your friends and family. Um, we'd really appreciate it. And Berna? Sorry, I'm mute.
I'm totally appalled that Doug Ford and company are getting away with this, um. They didn't tell the truth in the election. But as a society, I feel that we're sleepwalking through this issue. Oh, well, he wouldn't touch public health. He is touching public health and his. Sidekicks who come from rural communities and. They are just like a bunch of trained seals saying that, oh, this is all very fine. And the headline yesterday. Was that, um, you will always be able to pay with your old hip card. Not your Visa card. Come on, folks, we need return on investment for those shareholders in those privatized. Clinics. Who are we trying to kid? And why is the public not up in arms? Like, I just don't get it. And it's scandalous, absolutely scandalous. So to all of you. With your feet on the pavement and working so hard, thank you so much. Um, I really do appreciate it, but, uh, our old hip card is not going to carry us very far with Doug Ford and his cronies. So. I really do hope that the public wakes up soon. Take care. All of you, and thank you for tonight.
Thank you.
I, I, it's a, it's an excellent point, but I would just say. Uh, Berna, I, I haven't actually seen the level of concern. About healthcare privatization that I've seen about this issue. We had, uh, uh, I, I think Britt men- mentioned, uh, earlier, this is the, the biggest registration that we've had for a Guelph. Uh, co- uh, uh, and District, uh, Health Coalition event, and, uh, and we've, we've also seen, uh, over eight hundred and ninety people join the. OHC's Town Hall, uh, launching of this, of this campaign. So I, I, you know, the first week was rough. Uh, Ford got his points in, they, uh, uh, you know, uh, I, 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 I would say that. It was a rough week for us. Uh, I don't think they have the stomach to take a, a concerted campaign about this, and I think there is a bigger appetite. For, from people to, to give a little bit of their time and fight this project. And I, I, I'm more optimistic now that the, the. What the anger that I see over this, this issue. Ontarians hold public, uh, Medicare very dear, and I think they're gonna be willing to fight for it. I think we're gonna prove that.
I am hopeful. I am very hopeful, and thank you for all the work you're doing.
Uh, there's a good question in the chat. There's one I flag, which is, what is the timeline for this referendum?
May twenty-sixth, May twenty-seventh are the two at work, uh, sorry, the two community days of, uh, uh, voting. That's Friday, May twenty-sixth, Friday and Saturday, May twenty-seventh. And in the, the two weeks leading up to that, we'll, but we'll be holding, uh, workplace votes. So we'll be working. Uh, through our unions and through whatever form we can to hold workplace votes as well during that two weeks. But. The community votes, that'll be highly visible in the community, May twenty-sixth and May twenty-seventh. So circle them in your calendar. And try not to book any family events on those days to give us, you know, ideally eight hours that day, but if you can only, you only do it for, for three hours, we'll take that too.
Yeah, I also wanted to note that we have quite a few co-op students that work with the Ontario Health Coalition, and they're also lining up. Voting stations at the university, the university and colleges. On our London call, there was. A lot of interest from, oh, I, I. It was the medical students. I can't remember the acronym.
It's, um, um, so.
Okay, well, anyways, they, they were excited because. As the future of healthcare, they don't want this to be happening. Um, so they're gonna be hopefully hosting their own town hall to speak on this. Um, well, so there's University of Toronto already on board, uh, Georgian College. TM, was it Ryerson's new name? I can't remember. Um. University of Western Ontario. Um, and so we're really hoping to get Guelph on board as well. And so that will all happen in, right before they leave, um, for the summer. So that, that'll be in mid-March. Lance?
Yeah, I just want to say to Bur- Burma that the Ontario Health Coalition. Has not been asleep on this thing. Even back when Christine Elliott. Was the health minister and she brought, she first mentioned about. Uh, private hospitals, clinics. They were on to it. It, what it was is that. I think our problem was having the press. Giving, giving out the true stories and what's going on here in the province. Cuz some of the presses is, is in favor of private clinics. So that's just my opinion.
Absolutely. Thanks, Lance. And Barb?
Sorry, um, we, we also do, like, it's Guelph District Health Coalition, so we also try to take in Wellington County. Which goes up quite far. We have some member from, members from Palmerston. If you know of anybody in those smaller ca- um, county. And township groups, we need to get up there too. So, um, please reach out to, um, all of your, uh, friends and family, um, of people that live in the smaller areas, cuz, um. Like we said, a lot of them are the rural voters that are, um. Most susceptible to hospitals closing, uh, their emergency rooms. Close more often. And also a lot of them are conservative voters. They can talk to their MPP, MPPs that they may have voted for, and they may be totally against this. So we need to reach out to a lot of those people. So if you know some people that could get involved, that not just from Guelph, but, um, from the townships as well, that would be very helpful. Thanks.
Great points. Thank you, Barb and Berna. I'm mute.
I do know to turn that on, um. I'm just wondering if the recording. From tonight will be available, because I do live in Wellington County, uh, Ted Darnet's our MPP, um. So I would really like to know if. This will be available as information out. In our communities. Um, I did contact a lot of people that are politically active. And none of them are here. I'm very happy to see a couple of people from our church, so. Uh, that's wonderful, but for the number of people that I contacted, I'm, I'm disappointed. So. Uh, if the recording is available, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll be sending out the recording tomorrow morning. Um, and you can also go on to the Ontario Health Coalition's YouTube, and there's the town halls from all the, our previous meetings. So if you know anyone, say, in London, uh, Sarnia Lampton. Um, I don't know, they've, they've been happening across. There's Cornwall coming up, Peterborough coming up. Um, it's a great area just to see previous recordings and, and spread the word. All right. Well, I don't wanna keep anyone too much longer, but is there anything else that needs to be discussed or? Um, any questions that were missed in the chat?
Thank you all so much for your, your time tonight. It's, it's a. It's, it's a significant contribution, and we do look forward to working with you closely and with all the other, uh, local health coalitions throughout the province. Thank you so much, uh, to Britt and to Erin and to, uh, uh, Riley for helping to organize this. And everybody else, Barb, and I, I'm, I'm sure I've missed others, but thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for having me, everyone. Stay warm and safe.